Please rise, your speaker please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Welcome in. Good evening. Today is September 11th, 4:17 at 7:00 PM. Andrew O'Callaghan, please.
Basil?
There.
Meyer?
Here.
Kraus?
Here.
Missouri?
Here.
We have the meeting from August 28th. Are there any changes? If not, is there a motion?
I need a motion.
Is a motion made? Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Any questions in the motion? O'Callaghan.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Kabros?
Yes.
Weyling?
Yes.
Kabros?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Mrs. Witz? It was easy, you're done. Share that with your mortgage lender.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, take care.
I also want to thank you for cutting that free down. Listen on my property, but I was concerned about it every time you bring it up.
Listen to that.
And you did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Get that man behind you right there. That guy. Okay, the fourth of the Village Commission's communication, first, I'm sorry.
I got forward again.
I'm sorry.
Tomorrow night's meeting, I'm not sure what, I didn't see an agenda posted, but unless there was one today. Alls I know is we got the pads put in and landscaping done and we're waiting for the bench that was ordered about a week and a half ago. And that's all I had.
Fourth of July Commission, Mr. Meyer?
Consider a motion approving the issuance of a general fund check to Colesel Brothers as deposit for beer at the Fourth of July celebration. I kind of floated this idea at the last Fourth of July meeting that instead of going for a loan from Village Board, you know, when funds run low, it's possibly the Village could write to the deposit check for the beer company. Last year it was like $27,000, or year before last. This past year, I think it was 24,158, 24,158.70. But that's one of the things that kind of throws us in the hole for Fourth of July. It's a check that doesn't get cashed, but it still has to be something that would clear just in case they screw up and cash it. So I thought, how about if the Village writes that deposit check, it's not going to be a real check, they're going to tear the check up afterwards, but it gives us that much more cash flow to be able to meet, you know, the responsibilities we need with the fest.
Yeah, they would return the check to us and we would void the check.
Yes, and then Fourth of July Commission actually pays for the beer, the actual amount of beer used after the fest, it's just that they need this huge check ahead of time for their deposit check.
Think we figured out that that's what was causing us the problem every year with the bank.
Yeah, the last two years anyway, that's one of the problems. We switched beer companies and suddenly, I think the old company was charging us 10 or 12,000 for deposit, and this one last year was over 27. This year it was 24. So I don't know what everybody thinks of that idea as opposed to a loan.
And then just curious, with switching the beer companies, the old company didn't work out, or there's?
They had Bud, and Mrs. Miller.
Okay.
There was, here's a preference, number one, and then number two is I believe the last two years Miller came in with a better deal than Bud.
Yeah, it was my understanding, the state law requires that you pay for all your liquor on premise before it's sold. So they bring the semi in full of the beer and the product that you're selling, and you got to pay for it. I think Bud Light was restocking the semi during the course of the celebration where Miller's policy is no, you got to pay for it all upfront. That's the difference between this 10/11 and this 27.
It's possible it could end up being Oldstown, they were Bud Light again, and this, I was just at this particular point in time, and with all that was going on, we'd rather than going through this, going back and forth with the loan, it'd be just easier if the Village wrote the deposit check. And I think we figured out that that would basically cover that, you wouldn't have to keep going.
It'll only have to transfer funds back and forth from account to account.
Right, because the check gets torn up, and then the Fourth of July Commission actually writes the check for the beer that's used.
I was just curious on the difference of the deposit.
Where does it come in with the refund back from the?
They don't actually.
Waiting on the deposit back this year?
They don't, yeah, they don't refund it, they actually hand the check back, we get the original, if we write them a check for 25 grand, they give us the 25,000 back and we exchange it for a check for the actual amount of beer used.
But what was the problem with waiting on a deposit check this year? Wasn't there something with that?
I think he's asking about the infamous 15 missing kegs.
Oh, the 450? The 15 kegs? Is that what we were talking about?
Yeah, I thought that was like the check you were waiting back on.
That is supposed to be coming.
It's, I don't know why, is they didn't refund us enough money, they didn't credit us enough for refunds, and that they finally filed the 15 kegs, now they're supposed to credit us for those 15 kegs.
So it would be within the next week or two?
I mean, I guess, I don't, I could care less either way, I just don't, I don't know what's prompting all this, the big worry about, well, they're owing them money, I mean, we've done it the past couple of years, if you guys need it, when the time comes, I mean, absolutely, you'd be in favor of it, or we could even approve it, either way, I mean, I have a idea what they use the money for, you know, you use it for what you need to get the fest rolling, and then so be it. I mean, if it's for a deposit, it's for a deposit, if it's for something else, for something else, either way, it's needed to get the fest rolling, so, I mean, I'm in favor however the Commission wants to do it.
This was just kind of a, yeah, brainstorming way rather than coming up with a.
It sounds like the way you want to do it.
Yeah, this was actually just an idea, we were going to come up with a, you know, not to exceed 30,000 or 20,000 or whatever amount we had, but it just seemed like this was kind of, this seemed to be the thing that was really kind of throwing us over, is having to write this large deposit check, so.
It's cleaner too, because you end up transferring money at the end of June, so when you close the books for the month, you have that due to there, and then on July 6th it goes away. So on the Treasurers Report for the first of the month, you have that transfer.
Yes.
And this won't even show up. Is that correct, Marcus?
Well, if you write the check.
How does the Village write a check and it not show up?
Yeah, I was gonna say, if you write the check, it's in there, if you write a check on June 30th for 25,000 for beer, it's going to be voided by, well, in July it's going to be voided.
It's still going to have the same.
But it's going to show up.
But the Fourth of July, I think what you're trying to say, the Fourth of July Commission won't have that deficit, you know, whereas we have the funds that support the 27,000 check.
But the money's in the general, we'll write them a check out of general, that money's in the general.
It's a six and one half a dozen of them.
And.
Right.
Did they ever adopt any suggestions you made, Fourth of July Commission, for the last meeting they had?
Yeah, okay, we start weighing up for the question.
What, which one, did they adopt all of the suggestions? Because in the last meeting, Fourth of July Commission meeting, you made those, but they just sort of.
The Treasurers were one of them. We're going to implement those rules that we suggested at the Fourth of July meeting, we have next to those included a dollar spending limit, third set of eyes looking at it, what else do we suggest, okay?
Well, the one thing we did not come up with that would have to be the spending limit is that even a third set of eyes looking at an invoice, once the invoice is already spent, you could have 20 sets of eyes looking at it, but.
But we solved that by putting a 50 dollar spending limit on it, so he can't go over, or the Commission can't go over anything over 50 dollars unless he gets approval.
Has to be pre-approved.
From that. Motion?
So, so I will make a motion to approve the issuance of a general fund check to Colesel Brothers as deposit for beer at the Fourth of July celebration.
A motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, any questions in motion?
Does this get written out?
No, this wouldn't happen until next year.
June, is it June 30th?
It depends on, it has to be written the day before the fest starts.
Okay, whenever the beer is delivered, that's.
When the beer is delivered, you have to hand him the check.
Okay, so maybe put it out. Any other questions? O'Callaghan.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Kabros?
Yes.
Weyling?
Yes.
So I will make a motion to approve the issuance of a general fund check to Colesel Brothers as deposit for beer at the Fourth of July celebration.
A motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, any questions in motion? O'Callaghan.
Is this getting written out?
Second.
No, this wouldn't happen until next year.
June, is it June 30th?
It depends on, it has to be written the day before the fest starts.
Whenever the beer is delivered, that's.
When the beer is delivered, you have to hand him the check.
Okay, so maybe put it out. Any other questions? O'Callaghan.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Weyling?
Yes.
Kabros?
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 Yes.
Any other questions? O'Callaghan.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Kabros?
Yes.
Weyling?
Yes.
Youth Commission, trustee Missouri.
So, just another update, the night before, Missouri is still set, as far as I know, I haven't heard any changes for September 23rd. They're starting a planned trunk or treat, which is going to be October 21st. Flyer is not done yet, we did have someone from OME reach out, and they're interested, so we'll get that flyer to them as soon as we have it. The Chamber of Commerce is looking for more volunteers this year. If they don't get enough volunteers, they may not be able to continue doing this with us. But Dennis was reached out too, and he is going to have the M.A. present to help out. So as far as I know, it's moving forward for October 21st, and it's going to be the same route, same time, same everything, and I'll have more of the exact time and whatnot next meeting after we meet. Youth Commission meets the third Wednesday of every month, which should be next Wednesday, 7:30 PM, Village Hall.
Okay, just a question, is there a rain date on the 23rd?
As far as I know, there is not, but I will.
23rd.
Yeah.
Ribbon Hall Commission, trustee Missouri.
All six benches have been installed, I'm sorry, all eight benches have been installed at the Ribbon, big thank you to the public works, and the bricks have been sent out for engraving, and they should be coming back next week. We reached out to Ted Poles to see when they will install them, but we're moving in the right direction. Hopefully, we're still looking at a fall dedication, so.
Historic preservation, trustee Weyling.
We have our brand new sign being delivered tomorrow to the maintenance building, then the maintenance crew will install it, so you'll look for that down at the depot and also the museum. I'd like to add a new bill to the list of bills to pay for $850 for the final payment for Watzika signs. Of course, that check will not be given until we inspect the sign and everything is proper. So I'd like to make a motion to add that bill to Watzika signs for $850.
Here's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, any questions in motion? O'Callaghan.
Weyling?
Yes.
Kabros?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
So all you do is add it to the list of bills that's acceptable, acceptable to be of concern? Okay. Okay. Treasurers Report.
Oh, I have one other thing, our next meeting is next Wednesday evening, 6 o'clock.
Trustee David.
Donna? All right. The total of the Village accounts, 1,846,338. The total of the Commission accounts, 205,819, for a total of 2,052,157. The total in general, 784,908. You can see year-to-date comparison, we're on the upswing. The total Commission bills and non-AK payments, 425,408. The only thing in there, the 227,000 dollar check to Brand Excavating, but that was approved in last month's meeting, other than that, just your standard bills. And that ends my report.
All right. There's one additional piece of information that the mayor had added, correct, I'm looking at the video gaming packs, you want to add sheets in the Treasurers Report. Yeah, if you've noticed, each, each month genetically goes into and runs this gaming report, and if you've noticed, and sort of watching it, of who comes in first, who comes in last, it's pretty consistent, if you notice, and everybody's got what I'm talking about. If you've noticed, what I find it very astounding or amazing, whatever you want to call it, is Lacy's place has pretty much has been constantly number one, and yet you don't see any cars there.
Really?
Yeah. He's got to be heavy shark in there or something, so. They fluctuate a little bit, and what we'll do is we'll continue to give you those a month now. That's, that's that in a nutshell.
All right. I'd like to consider a motion approving the Treasurers Report and the Report of Financial Activity for the prior month.
It's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, any questions in motion? O'Callaghan.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Kabros?
Yes.
Weyling?
Yes.
All right, various reports for the preceding month are enclosed for your review, and the approval of bills for the prior month. All right, there's quite a few on here that are highlighted, I'm not going to go over all of them, there's about 10 or 12. And then, everyone got, got all the bills, are there any questions concerning the bills for the prior month?
Would you sooner add?
I'm going to add the 850, so I'd like to approve the bills for 157,451 and 94 cents.
A motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, any questions in motion? O'Callaghan.
Weyling?
Yes.
Kabros?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Trustee Missouri?
Okay. Consider referral to the Planning and Zoning Committee consideration amendments to the zoning ordinance pertaining to the parking of recreational vehicles, campers, boats, and residential districts. This item came up at the last meeting, the current ordinance allows for the parking of these items in residential districts as long as they are not in the front yard setback, on impervious surface, and five inches from any property line. This information was not available to the Board at the last meeting when this matter came up, but required a review of the 2005 code. The trailer in question violated these provisions and was ordered removed by code enforcement. The question remains whether a review of the ordinance should be completed. The committee can meet and give PZC some guidance as to what they are looking for in the proposed ordinance. We do intend to meet this Wednesday at 6:00, so.
Can refer to committee. Trustee first.
Consider an award of bid to Demlar Inc. in the amount of 51 cents per million square foot for the crack ceiling of streets in the village. It was only this bid we received this year. Demlar has been a little bitter for the past several years now on this annual program. This bid will provide for 48,000 millimeter feet of crack ceiling in the amount of 24,480. Should take a couple of days to get done. 25,000 was budgeted, so I will go ahead and make a motion to award a bid to Demlar Inc. in the amount of 51 cents per million foot for the crack ceiling of the streets in the village.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, and there was a second, any questions? O'Callaghan.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
It was asked by a local resident to proclaim September as a suicide prevention month, and the Village feature that proclamation was included, although a motion is not necessary, I would ask that a motion be made to support that proclamation.
Some of.
There is a motion on the floor, is there a?
Second.
Any seconds? Any questions in motion? O'Callaghan.
Weyling?
Yes.
Kabros?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Kraus?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Trustee Meyer?
Consider a proposal to establish and maintain a Village Facebook page from constituent outreach consultants at a cost not to exceed 1,500. We were given a proposal to help us, this is not a high going cost, this is a one-time 1,500 to help set up the page with the graphics, help with consulting as to best practices with setting up our terms of service and that sort of thing, so we set up the page correctly, archive things correctly. Again, it's a one-time fee, and then it's gone. They would continue to answer questions for six months afterwards if we had issues that came up or, you know, concerns, and then after that, it's gone. You know, four years ago, when I got on the board, one of the things I wanted to do was try to improve communication with residents, we were not quite ready for Facebook back then, I had a lot of questions, so we ended up going to the smartphone app. And the app was good at first, it was great doing push notifications, businesses loved it because it's, you just open the thing up and call any local business. So from an economic development perspective, it was extremely successful. This was one of their towns that they dealt with and had the most amount of downloads in the age group of people who would download an app, very successful. Then they switched to a different platform, and we have continued to have some issues with it. The communication part of it is not working anymore, we send push notifications half the time, it doesn't work, they have to constantly do updates, and the updates don't always work. They're doing a great job with trying to work with us, but it's just that things aren't working the way they used to. And, you know, let's face it, nowadays, a website for a project or for any kind of a company, a website is kind of like a library, you have a bunch of stuff stacked there, you can do research, you can download things, but it is not the place for news. In the age group of people that are going to get involved in municipal events, they're all on Facebook, that is their newspaper, that's where everything gets news. So the idea we have as far as setting this up is not to have an open forum like these resident pages where everybody can go on and post whatever they want and argue back and forth. This would be closed off, I think they call it a limited forum, where basically, we can do all the postings. The public can still comment under our postings, but they will not be allowed to post on the page. So we will still control content. To a degree, you can't control all the things that people post, people have First Amendment rights, but it has to be within certain parameters, there can't be profanity, there can't be threatening behavior, bullying, you have a right to pull anything down that does not conform with, with the law, with the standards that you've set up and published. I think in many cases, if we get the story out first, you know, there were a lot of questions that came up on some of those resident pages about the electric aggregation after the fact, you know, people were not aware of what was happening. It's one of those things after a Village Board meeting where you can just put a big posting up, here's what we're doing for questions and concerns, click here to call Village Hall, or click here to email, whatever email address you put up, and be done. Is there still going to be some conversation? Yes, but I don't think there's going to be as much if you put the message out as there are when nobody knows what's going on and it gets posted on all these neighborhood pages. I did quite a bit of research, I've talked to a few other towns in the area, and I kind of sent some emails around if anybody looked at what some of the other Facebook pages look like. They put a lot of community events up, you know, a lot of it, I can only see us, to be honest, posting maybe, maybe once or twice a week, we just don't have that much going on. But if something important does come up, I think it gives us an avenue to be able to reach out to people where we can put our message out first. As far as archiving things, I did a little research on that, I went to the Secretary of State's website, and technically, it's not considered a public record if you don't respond. So if you put a posting up and five people put something under it saying, yeah, great festival, atta boy, I hate you all, you know, whatever they want to put up there, if you don't have a conversation with them, it does not constitute a public record, it's, it's not even something that has to be responded to. If you respond to it, if somebody posts something about there's a pothole on Route 1 and you send out a crew, then it becomes a public record, but it's all still out there in the public eye. You know, those were the two main things I was concerned with, was First Amendment and, get what I just said.
How frequently, Marcus, should we be posting on this?
It's up to us, our page, our rules.
What would your community's recommendation be?
I would say probably twice a week would be good. We may not even have enough to post all the time, twice a week. After Village Board meeting, when you have President's Corner, I mean, I know technically, until the minutes are approved, those aren't, you know, necessarily put out in the public eye, but some of the things that the mayor talks about, the Suicide Prevention Week, things like this, those are things you could easily pop up on Facebook the next day, and it gives you something to post. Every time there's a holiday, as far as garbage pickup, that it's going to be out an extra day, you know, a week before water bills are due, reminder, water bills are due, you know, just things like that, that are just information, basically just news.
It's just a different platform.
It's just a different platform for news. I'll be honest, there is still a couple, every time I do research on this, I come up with more questions for constituent outreach consultants, so even before we finally signed this, if it's approved, I actually do have a couple of more questions for them as far as things that they would do for us, but, you know, the longer I wait, the more questions I have, and it's all things, we'll have committee meetings to determine how often we're going to do it, who is going to be allowed to do the postings, there would only be, I'm sure, two or three of us allowed to post on the site, rules for if problems came up, exactly what we're going to do, what to archive. I know one of the things they said was, if it's something, if you viewed everything you put on a Facebook page as a press release, it kind of gives you a guideline, it's something that you would post in a newspaper, if you had a newspaper at your disposal every single day.
But it's a little more personal.
It's a little more personal, it doesn't have to be in those particular terms as if Um, rules for if problems came up, exactly what we're going to do, what to archive. I know one of the things they said was, um, if it's something, if, if you viewed everything you put on the Facebook page as a press release, it kind of gives you a guideline, it's something that you would post in a newspaper, if you had, if you had a newspaper at your disposal every single day.
But it's a little more personal.
It's a little more personal, it doesn't have to be in those particular terms as if you're going to publish something in a newspaper. If you did publish something as a press release and put it on Facebook, you don't even have to capture what you put on Facebook, because if it's duplicate postings, you only need to keep it once.
That's something, this does not meet me by my point, so.
No, and that's one of the things you post, I know you can do a pinned post at the top of the page specifying exactly, you know, when it's available, but every single one of the pages I looked at, they, they list their hours and say this page is available during business hours, and there's nobody there that's going to be looking at anything after hours, we would have to put a disclaimer up that this is not a place for emergency postings, you know, this is for information only. Plus that people would not be able to post on the page, they would only be able to post under something you've already posted, which isn't particularly visible unless you actually go look for those comments. It would be completely closed off to public comment except for comments under which you've already posted. And will there be things that can still get contentious? Of course.
It's happening anyway.
It's, it's happening anyway, it's just not happening on our page, but it's out there. I mean, do you guys have concerns or questions?
What do, what do we pay for the phone app?
What is it at these days?
Twenty-five hundred a year.
Twenty-five hundred a year.
And I think Nixel, we got a negotiated rate of twenty-five hundred a year? Why don't you explain what you're thinking of with the...
Well, since the app isn't working as well as it used to, and we still need to get some information out, I figured we could see how this goes.
Eliminate the app. Go to the chamber and tell them, we're discontinuing it, if you guys want to continue it, it's your ball.
And they may want to take it over, but honestly, that it has become, it has come to a point where that is the best thing that the app is good for.
Yeah.
Um, but not necessarily, the calendars have become cumbersome, it's difficult to link to the school district calendars, they change the address every year, so every year we go to link and none of the app, none of the calendars work to contact the school, get a hold of all the calendars, it's just, it's not working the way it had been intended in the first place.
Plus the push notifications was a, was a big part of it, well, unfortunately, it's broken again.
Yeah.
So...
That was the biggest thing I wanted the app for, was the push notifications.
And, and Nixel's been working very well in that. And I, and I have a feeling the push notifications is probably because there are so many iOS updates and...
Yes.
That's probably, it's not keeping up with the times, so...
And that's yearly, twenty-five hundred, where this is a one-time fifteen hundred.
One-time.
And feature does publish a phone book with the information that's on the app.
Isn't there a link on the website too?
There's a link maybe to the Chamber of Commerce on our website, and that's something, you can put links on your Facebook page to...
Put a link to the app, to the chamber.
To the app, yeah.
Yeah.
Which, we would just remove that part.
Right.
Bottom line is, I think what she wants to do is can take the place of the app, and might be more efficient.
I think it's probably easier getting information out to the public that way than the app.
Pretty much everybody's on Facebook these days.
Again, there's, again, there's another segment of our population that doesn't use Facebook.
But that's what newsletters are for.
We're still not eliminating that part of it.
No.
It's just a different platform, Scotty. It's not really... It's only, it could, it could be a replacement of the app. Everything else would probably stay the same.
John?
Hi. I have the utmost faith and confidence in trusty Meyer in the way that this would be brought. I do understand this is a, can be a slippery slope, I've seen things on Facebook literally explode. My, I'd be all for this right now, my only concern would be, once you set it up, it's there.
In some cases, now, actually, I had a conversation tonight with the communications director of a very large town that's somewhat near us, and they actually had a, a nationwide incident, um, last summer that had to be addressed, and Face, their Facebook blew up to such a degree where it was, there was a lot of comments that cannot be acceptable in any media, um, and they literally had to pull the page down for five days until things cooled off and put the page back up again.
That was my question was, but my question is, is with...
In an emergent situation...
With everything needing to be open, with Open Meetings Act, what's FOILable, everything else, and censorship, are you allowed, once you have it open, to shut it down?
Yes, because there is no requirement that you have a page in the first place, and actually, when I went on the Secretary of State's page, um, there was a comment, it says comments and posts on an agency's account, now this is as far as having the page up, by the public or other outside entities are not by default even considered to be records unless you're responding to someone, if somebody just posts some stuff, it's not even a public record that has to be kept. Um, there is something here, agencies are not required to maintain inappropriate comments or inflammatory language being posted by members of the public, but if you're going to take it down, you may want to, you know, keep a copy of it just, just to show your reasoning. Agencies are also allowed to turn off comments when appropriate as they are under no requirement to allow them. This is our Secretary of State, this is, and the name of this thing is Government Records Law in Social Media.
I'm glad I have the utmost faith in Meyer.
But how long do we have to store this information?
There is no difference between, and that's in here too, there's no difference between electronic media or any other media, so I'm sure the village clerk knows whatever the type, whatever the rules are for storing a specific type of information, it has nothing to do whether it's electronic or not, a specific type of record has its own retrieval for, I'm sure for payroll and for, you know, whatever it is, it has its own length of time, this goes along the same exact guidelines as any other...
So we're not talking terabytes of data? We're talking megabytes, not terabytes?
Okay, so back to my question, that, like, that section where you said we can or cannot allow comments, we are allowed to stop them once they've begun, though.
You can...
You have the right to...
You also, you have the right, you have the right to remove comments if they violate the terms on the page. Under those circumstances, I would strongly recommend screenshotting it, and they even say, put a note on it as to what did violate it, just in case somebody has an issue and says, what did you do with my comment? Um, you can block users who continually violate the rules, and you just log what you've done. And actually, this person I spoke to at that city says they literally had to block babies of users because it just got so out of hand, but basically, they chronicled it, here's who was blocked, here's why, and that's it.
There was an article about Park Forest.
That's not who I'm talking about.
No, there was an article in Park Forest, I'll have to find it, it was on the front page of the paper within the last...
Was it about the trolls? Yeah?
And social media, so...
Yeah, that was all over the news, I know what you're talking about. But for the most part, um, everything is already there, they recommend, I've seen whole, not spreadsheets, but, um, I can, I never think of the name of that, flow charts for how you can determine whether to take something down or not. Does it do this? Yes, you can take this down and do this about it, no, then ask this. If it does this, no, then it'll do this. The important thing is they say, you know, they give an example, they says if, if somebody goes on there and, and posts that there's a pothole in the middle of Route One, okay, it's nothing but a comment, it, it's not a public record, it doesn't even have to be kept. If however, you go send a truck out to fix it, now you've responded to that and it becomes a public record. If you respond to them and say, thank you so much for the information, we'll be happy to go out and send somebody to fix it, it's a public record. If they post, I hate public works because of the pothole problem, somebody's opinion, you know what I mean, but it's somebody's opinion, it's not a public record, and that's not something you shut down, if, you know what I mean, that people are allowed to have an opinion.
Did you say that you're allowed to set these up where comments aren't allowed?
I don't know.
Comments of any kind?
This one says, this one says you can turn it off, I don't know that you can turn that off. I know sometimes on your own page on individual posts you could set, though that's one of the, I have a whole list of questions for C.O.C. we go to set it up. If even there's, if there's one particular post, if you want to cut comments off, I don't know if that's possible on Facebook. It's legal, but I don't know if it's possible. That's some of the things we have to learn, yeah, when we sit down and kind of, and you can shut the page down and bring it back up again.
If you don't allow comments under posts though, how viable is it in that media?
I know...
And people will, people will read it, but if we don't allow them to post, I mean, if people are friends on it, I mean, you can still see it.
Okay, so...
If you go into, I went on Peatones page, and I really had to hunt, I mean, you have to go a ways back before you find any comments, and you have to look for the comments, there's thumbs up and things, but you have to go read every post, kind of look underneath and see who has commented. Most of the time, they're posting things about festivals, like, you know, happy stuff, you know, here's what's going on in town, here's this, here's that, and, you know, there are some things we could post where there would be a ton of comments, and the electrical aggregation thing might be one of them, because they have a ton of questions on Facebook, on the regular Facebook pages, they would probably be posting under that, not necessarily negatively, but...
But I think if we got the information out ahead of time, we might have less phone calls, we'd have a ton of phone calls.
Fewer comments. And a lot of them are just...
There's a lot of Facebook pages, the feature pages that I already noticed.
But a lot of the things that are comment, that are comments under posts, even in some of the other towns that you look at, is just, oh yeah, great, there was a festival, had a great time, hey, saw you there, you know, there's comments like that, sometimes there are some other comments on there that, oh yeah, they don't know what they're doing, whatever.
The village department has one, that's the one I see, there's very little comments on it. There's one thing that, maybe another comment we should make, police departments had Facebook page for quite a while, it hasn't really caused you a problem, it's an official Facebook page, but it still is a police department Facebook page, and it hasn't caused a problem, but I think the main thing is that, once we put it up, if we find it's not working like we thought it would be, bottom line, you should take it down.
Take it down.
And you go back to the drawing board.
They do recommend that you discourage, and I don't know if you can completely eliminate it, private messaging, because that's something that's difficult to archive. I says if, if every posting we put up, if we put boilerplate at the end, for further questions, please call blah blah blah, or email blah blah blah, you might have less of that. Private messaging, this is, it's a little more difficult to capture if you need to keep records of that. It's better to go through conventional email that you're already able to capture and, you know, follow the rules with.
Does this company do other towns too?
They do, and I could get a list.
I'm just curious, because it says they offer for the first six months, uh, answer, answer questions, they offer advice, just wanted to know if they had any.
Hey, what, actually, can you ask them yourself?
Good.
Because they're usually there.
Yes, they are.
Oh!
Yeah, they are at IML.
Are you usually there?
That's where, that's where we met them.
I want to say, remind me of that, I won't...
Well, truthfully, they, they, for quite a few years, I don't remember, last year, they advertised feature as one of their customers, asked, our app has been there, so you can't miss them, if, if they're still living, I don't know.
I was just curious if they have the knowledge to answer these questions or if this was something they're just getting into.
Well, I actually, I do intend to ask them some of those questions, I was kind of going to rely on them a little more as far as help with setting up the graphics, getting the page off the ground. Jeanette and I set up the, um, Fourth of July commission page, and it was a nightmare because neither of us knew what we were doing, and we were using my cell phone number for it, and then I couldn't use my own cell number or my own page after that, I mean, it was just, we had no, we were just kind of stumbling through it. It would be nice to have someone who knows how to set a page up to just kind of take off and run with it, and that's what I'm interested in.
I, I don't, don't quote me, but I know Buffalo Grove has a contract with them, Waldorf Video.
Could you?
So, if Buffalo Grove has a Facebook page, chances are C.O.C.'s one.
Well, they do Facebook pages for some municipalities, and they're quote with something like a thousand dollars a month to do your entire Facebook page, they do all your postings, they do all your archiving, basically, you, your hands off, you hand them some information...
And all in all, I want it, I want us to do that.
Well, we can't afford that anyway, so, and we're not big enough to deal with that, this is a big time.
Sometimes there's a time lag when we do these.
Well, no, Tilly Park, I think, has a Facebook page, some of those bigger municipalities, they have a company that does that for them, they don't do that themselves.
They don't think setting up the Facebook page is a difficult problem, it's the settings that have to test the difficult problem.
Well, and I was even looking at the terms, a lot of these pages have different terms. Lansing, I thought, had the best group, Bossman was another, where they had really great terms of service as to what they'll allow, what they won't allow, um, there's specific things you have to set up, you have to mention that it is an official page, you have to link it to your website, I mean, when you're a government, now Facebook is a little better too as far as, um, setting parameters if you're a government, and, you know, giving you information. A lot of this information I didn't need constituent outreach consultants, my God, there's consulting firms that have this stuff, give us your email address and we'll give you all this free information, and, you know, I got a lot of information, I'm going to the Secretary of State's website, a lot of it is available. But for guidance as far as the initial setup, issues that we'll run into for setup, that's kind of what I'm interested in, in their help with.
I agree, because that's the hardest part, when we set up the Facebook page, there's different types of business pages, government pages, nonprofit pages, and there's different functionalities that you can set up and privacy, and, there's just a lot of things announced that we haven't been comfortable setting up at all.
The man I spoke to tonight says to use the strongest filters, uh, when you're setting up the obscenity settings, you know, the, the filters in the beginning, because the strongest one are the best way to go. They'll catch the most, some of them you set up a filter and it doesn't catch everything. Any other questions?
All right, I would like to make a motion to, uh, let's see how long we've heard this, to use constituent outreach consultant services at a cost not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars to establish and maintain a village Facebook page.
So motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second, any questions in motion? Roll call.
Basil?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Proust?
Yes.
Missouri?
Yes.
Capers?
Yes.
Whalen?
Yes.
Okay, any old business to come before the floor? Under new business, I have one thing, uh, most of you probably know this, but I'll just say for the audience that, uh, Princess Cafe is, is celebrating forty years of, with the current owner, I know it's been there a lot longer than that, uh, there happened to be a celebration Saturday, was very well attended, and I'd like to get, once again, congratulate Princess Cafe for their fortieth anniversary and contribute to my cholesterol and to my weight problem, although it has been a year. But, uh, actually, it was, uh, pretty proud to have a business, I know there's others, but just pretty proud to have a business here forty years and serving our communities, all right? Thank you, or thank them for their service, thank you.[1599.94]